Good evening, everybody. The virtual special council meeting for Tuesday, August the 4th, 2020 is being called to order at 6:34 PM. Thank you very much. Now, please have a silent meditation followed by pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. May I please have roll call?
Roll call, Vice Mayor Nickerson.
Here.
Councilperson Roman.
Here.
Councilperson Urbom.
Here.
Perella or Cabios are not in. Also present for the record, Janice Jacobi, Village Clerk, Kristia Lou, Village Manager, Inroom Village Attorney, Norman Powell. You have a call.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I really appreciate that. For the record, Mayor Cabios is on another call, another meeting, and she will be here as soon as she gets a chance to, so we appreciate that. Before we go any further into the agenda, Mr. Attorney, this is your time to give us the rules and regulations. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
I will do it. As always, it'll take a few minutes, but we'll get through it quickly. On March 20th, 2020, Governor Ron DeSantis issued Executive Order Number 20-69 relating to local government public meetings. The Governor's Executive Order suspends current laws that require a quorum, be present in person, and that a local government body meet in a specific public place. It authorizes local governmental bodies to use communication media technology, CMT, such as telephonic and video conferencing, as provided in Section 120.54, subsection B2 of the Florida statutes. Further, Chapter 28-109, entitled Conducting Proceedings by Communications Media Technology of the Florida Administrative Code provides guidance for the procedures to be followed to conduct a proceeding by means of communications media technology or to provide access to a proceeding by use of a CMT. The Governor's order does not waive any other requirement under the Florida Constitution and Florida's government and the Sunshine laws. The village is using Zoom to hold this virtual council meeting. The Zoom platform does not require the public to purchase or download any additional software or equipment to watch this meeting. Zoom is a cloud-based platform for video and audio conferencing, collaboration chat, and webinars across mobile devices, desktops, telephones, and room systems. Public comment will occur, as they always do, at the council and committee meetings, during good and welfare, and after each agenda item prior to voting. When the chair opens the meeting for public comment, anyone wishing to participate will have three minutes to speak. This is how you will use the Zoom application to be recognized. If you're using a mobile device, click the raise hand on the button. If you're using your computer, click the icon Participants on the bottom of your screen. You will see the option to raise your hand. There are two ways to view the meeting on the screen. The first is gallery view, and the second is speaker view. Gallery view allows you to view all or most participants at the same time on your screen. In the speaker view, whoever's speaking will be viewed front and center, while other participants will be on the top in smaller squares. Please make sure to mute microphones when not speaking. If possible, use headphones to mitigate sound feedback. When addressing the village council, please state your name first and your home address. Also, comments submitted will be included as part of the public record in this virtual meeting and will be considered by the village council prior to taking any action. Everyone participating in this virtual meeting is required to maintain decorum. There's no clapping, applauding, heckling, or verbal outbursts in support or opposition to a speaker, or his or her remarks shall be permitted. No signs or placards shall be allowed. No person other than the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a council or through a member of the council without permission of the chair. No questions shall be asked of a council member except through the chair. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous, rowdy, disruptive, or making personal comments while addressing the council shall be barred from further participation in this meeting by the mayor or the chair in this case. If any time during the virtual public meeting, the building of the public to listen or participate is interrupted due to a technical problem, the meeting shall immediately be paused during such time and resume when the technical problem is corrected. The village has published an agenda as well as included in the notice to the public pursuant to our village code and the items and topics that will be discussed at this virtual meeting. Additionally, the public has been given the opportunity to provide public comment during the meeting. Mayor and council members, are you comfortable with all of the notice provisions set forth and the uniform rules of procedure we have established for this virtual meeting?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney. I appreciate that. Right now, you guys, we're going to have the approval of the agenda. This is a time right now to where if anybody wants to add anything to the agenda, take anything off the agenda, you make a motion for that.
Vice Mayor, I don't want to add anything, but I do want to mention that Louis Perella is showing as an attendee. So I don't know if he needs to be brought in.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we bring in Louis if possible? Thank you very much, Councilperson. And Mayor Cabios, I see, is about to join us soon. Councilperson Urbom, you have your hand up?
Yes. As far as the agenda, I would like, I was going to motion to remove the item regarding the RFQ. However, if we have the full council here, I'm just curious as to why this is showing up at this meeting when the discussion was around having that for the 10th and ultimately for the 14th. So I'm curious about that. I feel like we should just focus on what this meeting was called for and get that business done.
I don't know. Have you guys passed the agenda? Not yet, right?
We haven't yet, Madam Mayor. We just got to approve of the agenda. And for the record, Councilperson Perella is not there. So thank you very much, Councilperson Roman. Thank you. It's all yours, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
I just had two questions. So I didn't know, I literally just hopped in and I haven't. So I have two things. I didn't know if you guys wanted to even potentially go over the budget. I didn't know if you want to add that. I think that it might be a good opportunity to just take a look if, see if the manager and the CFO have gone over any of the budget. I will tell you that I spent about seven hours going over the budget this weekend, and I made some strong recommendations that I'd love the council to see. And I reviewed it in its entirety with the manager and the CFO on Monday. And then to my next point, I'm the one that requested for the RFQ to be added. It doesn't have to or it doesn't. I just thought it was a good opportunity since we're meeting anyway to just to see what has been done, what hasn't been done, if you had any questions. That was really my reasoning. If nothing has really been updated. I know that we're going to receive it by the 10th or whenever. I think it's the 10th, but we're not going to have an opportunity to all talk again until September's meeting. So that was my recommendation since we're all meeting anyway for one item. I thought that we could briefly go over and discuss not only the RFQ, how it's coming along, but also, and even more importantly, the budget. So my recommendation of the council is amenable to, if we can just go over the budget. We have a budget hearing coming up September 8th, I believe. And I thought it would be, a lot of things were left on the table in terms of what could be done better or recommended. So I think if we're all here and if, again, if we're all of the availability to go over the budget one more time.
So just real quick on the RFQ. It is done. A final is done. I emailed late this afternoon the final file in PDF and Word format to the clerk and the manager. I don't have issue at all with that being disseminated so people can review for the next time that we would meet. I don't know that tonight is the best time to go through that contract again because of the purpose of this special meeting being called. I, again, feel very strongly that we should stick to the topic that brought us to this meeting tonight. And then I'll just throw my two cents in on the budget discussion. I, again, also, for the same reasons, would be feeling strongly that we, the budget hearing is scheduled. Two budget hearings are scheduled. And we're going to have hours upon hours to go through what everybody has come across as they each go through the budget. So my opinion is to continue with just the resolution for this evening. I would be amenable to passing along or having the clerk disseminate the RFQ since it is with a final copy done and in her inbox. But with not having anybody had a chance to look at it yet, I feel like if we go down that hole of going over that contract tonight, it's going to be, again, like 9:00, 10:00 o'clock here before we're leaving.
The comments with regards to whether or not to add or not add to the agenda.
Yes, I agree with Councilperson or, I think we should stick to what, you know, whatever we had set up these special meeting for. And I understand, you know, like about, but it's, you know, about probably using the time to discuss a little bit more into that other stuff. But it could go over two hours easily. So I don't have time to look at the budget. I don't think, I just got here from work late today, so I don't know what you guys have in the, you know. But yeah, so we should just stick to what, you know, this is all about reading the ordinance for the elections, right?
I don't have a problem putting off the RFQ. I mean, if changes were made, and I mean, we requested the village manager to get creative. So if there are updates on the budget, I mean, I would like to see it. If we decide not to do it here, then I can always give her a call. But I think that, you know, a review of the budget wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I was just going to say pretty much the same thing. I think with the RFQ, you know, we gave them to the 10th. Then I think we should, you know, kind of just stick with that because they probably planned their schedules around having it done by the 10th. So I'm good with leaving the RFQ off. If the budget, if there is updates or things people just want to like go through, I have no problem. You know, we can never go through the budget, you know, too much. There can never be too many times you go through the budget. So that's how I feel also. Thank you very much, Madam.
That's fine. So and just for point of clarity, that's fine if you, the RFQ, you want to move past that and you feel comfortable and we can all receive it and review it. That's fine. As it relates to the budget, just keep in mind, while we have two hearings in September, they're hearings. So we usually only allot 30 minutes. And if we're still workshopping through a budget or we're asking for recommendations, I would urge the council to reconsider because I think it would, since we're here, it's better if we spend an additional maybe 30 minutes here because we have one item that I believe for the most part is going to go through pretty quickly. From the last meeting, we all relatively agree on what needs to happen next. So that's going to take all of five to 10 minutes. And then unless you have any public comments. But again, with the budget, it would maybe, it would be greater, it would be best because there were too many questions unanswered and still things that were incorrect and inaccurate for us to get a report, not just for us, but for the residents to hear the report so that hopefully when we get to the first and second hearing, it's not a workshop, it's an actual hearing.
No, I have a question.
I'm okay with moving the RFQ, that's fine. But the budget, I would urge the council to reconsider for, and we can time it. Let's have a real good, you know, 20-minute discussion on the budget because I think that you all would be pleased with, I believe some of the changes are going to be coming forward, that we found some areas of real savings by really, 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 really looking at it with a further microscope. Yes, Councilperson Perella?
It's a CFO here? No? Okay. I don't know. You guys still going to have a budget review without the CFO? I've been here making some recommendations and asking questions.
Oh, may I recommend that at least the manager give us a brief overview of what was discussed, and then you all can call the CFO. How about that? So at least you can hear and the residents can hear what has been discussed. And then you all can take the opportunity to call the CFO. And if need be, we plan another meeting, which I hope that's not the case. But my intent is so that the hearings are more of a hearing and not a workshop. So at this time, I will accept the motion. If there's a motion to either leave the agenda as is, remove the item and add a brief overview from the manager, or remove everything and leave it for only one agenda item. So there's an opportunity for three different motions here.
I motion to pass.
The council to consider the budget.
I motion to pass the agenda, striking item E and adding a manager's report of budget review before good and welfare. So that would be, I guess we could pick a letter. There's lots of space between F and M, but call it item G as a manager report as it pertains to budget update. That's my motion.
Okay, perfect. So there's the motion to add, to remove E1 and then add, I would say, you can, I think it's either old business or new business you can add it. And it would be the manager's report, and it would be update on the proposed 2020-21 budget since we last met, keeping the military at 8.3. Okay, thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
All second.
All right, second by Councilperson Roman. So there's a motion to amend the current agenda, striking E1 and adding G1, which is old business manager update on the proposed 2020-21 El Portel budget. May I have, all in favor saying, all in favor saying a?
Aye.
Aye, there you go. And all oppose, nay. Okay, hearing none, the budget with the amendments passed, thank you. With that said, what do we have here? First, we're going to go right into candidate qualification ordinance 2020-14. If I can please have the attorney read the ordinance with the change in date into the record, please.
Okay. I'll read the title and then the change in dates is not in the title, but I can just explain it.
Explain it, yes.
Yeah. An ordinance of the village council of the village of El Portel, Florida, amending section 6-4 Qualification of Candidates Form Petition Code of Ordinances relating to qualifying periods, providing for severability, repeal of all ordinances and resolutions in conflict, codification, and an effective date. Just generally, this is, as it's stating, amending section 6-4. The qualifying dates have been further amended since the last meeting to provide that the qualifying date will begin at noon on August 5th, 2020 and run through August 14th of 2020. This ordinance also, as I mentioned at the last meeting, brings the village's coding into consistency with the Florida statutes for the applicant candidate filing fee and the election assessment. The petition, that's the form petition that's included in the ordinance is also updated to reflect the changes consistent with the Florida statutes for the election assessment and the filing fee. Other than that, everything else in the code section remains the same.
Great, thank you for that. So there is a motion to consider adopting 2020, excuse me, there's a motion to consider adopting ordinance 2020-14 on its second reading, candidate qualification with an update extending the qualification period from August 5th, August 5th through August 14th. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance on second reading?
Motion to adopt ordinance on second reading, Madam Mayor.
Motion has been made by Councilperson Perella. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
A second by Vice Mayor Nickerson. Any discussion?
I have a question. So the new dates are for 10 days. In the past, it's been 12 days. I mean, it's just two more days, but I, you know, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just wondering, are we gonna, is this going to, does this change year to year? Or is there anything that we can do to avoid what happened this year so that every election year, we can have the full, you know, two weeks, which in reality, 12 days is not two weeks, but.
So the mayor has said historically it was 10 years, yeah. The 10, 10, 10 days, right?
I don't know. I don't know if the attorney wanted to add anything.
Well, I mean, I think it's a dual question for myself and I guess Ms. Jacobi. But my understanding of how the qualification period has been traditionally set since it's not defined in the code is usually based upon the communication we get from the supervisor of elections. So to the extent that we get an early signal from the supervisor of election as to when our drop dead date is for the qualifying period to end and to get our submissions into their office, we can work backward from that date going forward. And if the council wants to have it going forward always two weeks, then we would have to act quicker in proposing an ordinance and adopting an ordinance, setting the qualifying dates. Because, you know, every time we do this, every election cycle, it requires two readings. So we'd have to calendar it out and make sure that we take that into account.
Yeah, you know, thank you. And I was going to ask the clerk, but I was going to kind of reset what you said because when you take a look at 2018, and I want to say a couple of years even before that, this ordinance always generally would pass January, February, March, never this late. So I think that would also help in the process. So I don't know if there's anything different that happened in 2018 than in this year, although I would think this year, we'd have a little more time because of COVID. But that doesn't seem like it's going to be the case. So I guess I would, my recommendation is to, for the clerk, to either set a tickle or reminder that in January of the election year, that that be a conversation that is reminded to the mayor and the council that this is a conversation that needs to be had. Or even better than that, you all can just put it in admin and finance tracking report that in January, just like you have the budget hearings and you have, what do you have in there? You have the military and the budget here in the tracking report. It would be the same thing. Every other year where there's an election, by January, you want the ordinance with a qualifying date because automatically that'll just resonate in someone's mind, especially if they're new members on the council. That was being my recommendation. So I didn't know if the clerk wanted to add anything as it relates to if Miami-Dade County or the state changes anything every two years or every four years. But there are some years that we do it a lot earlier, and then there are just some years like this year that it was really late in the game. Janice, did you need to add anything to that or? Okay, so my recommendation, I don't know what the council says, but my recommendation is just put it in the tracking report for the admin and finance. And that way, like the military, like the budget hearings, when you guys are going to set days, you just know that every two years or every four years, wherever it may be in the future, that is something that the council needs to remind themselves to pass that ordinance because it is an ordinance that requires two readings. So I think if you, I think if the, I think if the election, the county elections gives to the municipalities the ending date as to when they need everything by, you can determine the qualifying period, you know, anytime before that and have two weeks, if that makes any sense. Councilperson Urbom?
Yeah, so I think that sounds logical as far as the tracking report that way. And then just in terms of the fees, we feel like the corrections we made to the fees will be, will stand long-lasting. Is that right?
Attorney?
Well, yes, as long as the legislature doesn't change it.
Okay.
And if they change it, you know, well, next election cycle will include it in another amendment to 6-4.
Very perfect. Any other discussion? I don't see any attendees with us except Ms. Hansel Keel. Any other questions or comments from the council to any, anybody in the administration? Okay, seeing none. May I please have roll call? Roll call, Councilperson Perella.
Yes.
Councilperson Urbom.
Yes.
Councilperson Roman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nickerson.
Yes.
Mayor Cabios.
Yes.
Motion passes by tonight. Perfect, thank you. Next, we have, alrighty. So now we're going to go into G, G1. I'd like the manager to please provide the council with an update with the proposed budget for next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't have any document to share with everyone. We've been working, I mean, it's been a working document, as you all know. And I have met with the mayor and our CFO yesterday extensively to kind of go over some changes. You know, some things that we could do better or to, you know, find some savings. And the mayor had some good recommendations as well. So we are working on that. I'll get something to you all, but I want to go over what we did come up with just from the general fund revenues. We want to kind of right-side some of these things, like the business home tax receipts. I think it's called occupational licensing. We really, in fact, we have a mailing going out tomorrow to ensure that people are renewing their home business licenses. And we've fallen short in the past of kind of collecting and staying on top of those. So that should garner about $4,200, whereas we had it kind of proposed for $1,900. So that's something that we can take advantage of, the adds to the revenue. We also want to add a bit more on our code compliance fines and really stick with enforcement and then seeing that through because we, you know, we have been lax and because we want to be, you know, open to residents and assisting them in curing. But we, you know, we do have a village that looks a certain way. We want it to continue to look beautiful, but, you know, we really need to be above our code compliance. So I think that's going to be an opportunity, not that we're trying to make money off of people, but understanding that we have to do more with our code compliance. So with that, we'll bring a little more revenue. Just over in admin and finance, we propose to now do RFPs so we can lower some of our fees, such as the lobbyists. We'd like to take that down to 30,000, from $36,000 to about $30,000 or $25,000, depending on what we need. But we're really going to look at what we're getting for this and then see if we can reduce our fees. So an RFP would be appropriate for that. We're going to want to do an RFP for the professional services, meaning the accountant. So our CFO position, which we have to do anyway, but we would keep that. Well, we'll see what's out there for us and see what we can do about lowering once we get our budget workable. We have all, you know, we all agree, our budget is small, so it should be a lot easier to handle. But I think we're just in the role of fixing all the time. So we get it to a functioning place, we can really see some savings with our, because we don't need the best-paid accountant to run our budget as long as we have a good one that's run properly and is consolidated on certain things because we have a lot of accounts. So we're trying to break all that down and make it a lot easier, simpler. So that's an opportunity. Also, an RFP for the IT services. I mean, we've talked about that before as well, but there possibly is some savings in that, and I think it's time for us to do that. So there are three RFPs I'm considering, and I think that will help us with some of the spending in the administration of finance department. Also, our communications, public relations, the building repairs and maintenance. We'll take that, it's been budgeted for $30,000. We'll take that down to 10. You know, I put that in because we had leaks and all of these other things in the village hall that needed repairs. Right now, we're only, you know, we have a situation with our floor. We need that fixed, but I think we really can, you know, take that down a bit. That's not priority when we're trying to, you know, just find some savings. So we'll forego the floor situation, but maybe we just reduce that by 20,000. I think that's a big, a nice, a nice bit of savings. Also, our miscellaneous staff events, that was, you know, birthdays, holidays, you know, those things, anniversaries. And we're not, you know, with the new normal, we're not really doing that anyway. So we can take that down to 3,000. Our office supplies, we had it at 8,000. We can take that down to six. I mean, able to tighten up a bit on, you know, just our supplies and those things. So that's an opportunity to save. Village clerk, I'm going over to the next one. Now, that one, Mayor Cabios suggested, and we looked at the village clerk's contract, and we will address just the what is, I guess, explained and what is spelled out in the contract and pay according to that. So we, we have to discuss it. So we'll look at that. So I'm just going by notes. Reduce amounts for, okay. So for our public affairs budget, we're reducing all of the events, their amounts. The newsletter is also going to be reduced down to zero because we can do the newsletter in black and white, which would be free with the service we presently have. Mayor Cabios has told me that the reason it costs is because it's in color and it looks really nice. But we can do a black and white or we can do an online that would be free. So that's a savings there. Also, the leak of city's dinner. the leak of cities dinners can be reduced, the other activities we can all reduce. We don't have to buy tables, we can buy chairs or seats at some events, but there are some savings in public affairs that we can really realize there, as well as the Christmas event, which is appropriate considering we're in the new normal anyway, so we're not gonna be having an event at that level. So there are some opportunities in public affairs. Police, we're just kind of sticking with what the, how we're projecting to end the year. We're not increasing anything. So the way it ends is the way we will budget for twenty twenty-one. And that applies for our other salaries, comp time, insurance, office supplies as well. We reduce that to twenty-five hundred dollars from twenty-seven. We'll move on to, let's see, anything else we discussed?
Kristia, real quick, you mentioned that you're going to reduce or put police back to where you're projecting. Did you have it, happen to have a total?
I don't have totals yet for everything yet, because we're, we're still, that's why I say, I apologize for not having something to you to review tonight, but we're still working on, working on getting everything in. For the public works, we wanna do an RFP for the lawn ser, law maintenance service. So that'll be a tremendous help. Also, I want to just bring to your attention that we have for regular salaries under public works, we've been paying our, our public works staffer part-time wages, and he works full-time. So we've discussed a way where we can get him to a reasonable and decent full-time salary, and we are able to use gas tax funds for that. So it won't be from budget, but we can pay half from gas tax and the other half from our budget. So we can give them a, a good salary. We're looking at thirty-five thousand, which is, you know, I think reasonable for, for all that he's been doing and doing. And, you know, we are saving a lot on some of the things he's able to do. Also, we're looking at some trainings for him, as was suggested by the tree board, like the arborist training and those kinds of things. So I think that'll help us in the long run. And we will find some savings with our lawn maintenance. And so these are just a few things. We, you know, I, I wanna get something to you all, you know, look at it. Call me, you know, talk to me if you have some other ideas or you want, you know, or, you know, but let's discuss it, because we do have the hearings coming up in September, and we want a, a good, solid document. So we have the month of August to really work on it, but you know, I'm open to hearing your suggestions as soon as possible, so that we can then all, you know, maybe reconvene at another time to have one last workshop. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Any questions or comments to the manager?
Well, to me, the bit, one of the older big tickets is actually from the contractor, we have and planning and zoning. Do we really have to? I mean, it's something that we can go, like, it's, they're working, is it, is it part-time sort of thing? It's, it's a full-time contract? It's, it's based on their, you know, what's their advice cost? It's costing us sixty thousand dollars a year? It's a little high to me.
Well, what I do know about that, you know, they, they do a lot for the village. I mean, we have to have an urban planner concerning the things that we're doing in the village, and we're trying to change a lot. So I know that resiliency is affected by, you know, planning and, or planning and zoning is, is affected by that. I know Juan and Camila do a lot for us, and with different projects coming in on those three properties that we've been trying to develop. I mean, we do need them. We really need to do, well, we've finally managed to, to work out all the kinks, but we're now doing the cost recovery, which is gonna help us a lot as they do more work and have more complicated projects. So we'll charge back on that. And I also know that they maintain the same price for, I mean, since, since before I came on board. So they haven't increased their price, but the work seems to be a lot more. So I, you know, if anyone else has any, anything more to add, I know we all have worked with Juan and Camila and Plasurbia quite a bit. So you, you can see that they are doing a lot.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't, don't let them know, but I, I feel like they're bargaining twice the price. So they really have, and, you know, from when I was a resident, before I came on the council, and certainly from being a member of the council, it can, it seems more and more evident that they really bring an incredible value to what they do for us. And, and it's, it's really been great having them, honestly.
I agree. And just one more thing to add about Juan and Camila. There, you know, there was an issue that happened back in twenty sixteen where some blueprints were lost from the village hall for a home that was built in nineteen forty, and the blueprints, you know, can't be recovered. So we, they are gonna do the blueprinting for us at an extremely, extremely discounted rate. And I think that's worth, you know, it's because of the relationship we have with them, and, and they are gonna do this, because I've priced it and tried to figure this out for this woman for over a year now. So I think we're, I mean, I don't wanna say it on, on the meeting, because it is a very good price, but if you call me, I'll let you know. But I think it's important to, you know, that relationship and that they know the village, they, you know, care, and they are always bringing our awareness to, you know, a lot of things relate to the water projects. Our, you know, planning as we move forward, the charrettes, all of these things, and also keeping us in touch with what's happening in the county as well. So I think they do a good job.
The only thing that I have to add is that, you know, when we're looking at RFPs and we're looking at contractors, I don't believe that going with the cheapest is always the smartest idea. You know, I do believe that we, because we're such a small village, and we don't have a lot of resources, that sometimes going with someone who's got a lot of experience is more important than going with the cheapest person. So I would recommend that we keep that in mind when we're looking at all of the RFPs and sending out RFPs. Because it's not always, sometimes there's a saying in Spanish, lo barato sale caro. So sometimes, you know, what's cheap costs you more in the end. So, you know, I think that I, I like for you to consider that, Kristia, when applying that to the RFPs, because you know, experience and the quality of the work is important.
No, I, I do. I agree with you, and I do that with all proposals, even when it's not RFP. I always consider that. I think established companies and contractors are a lot more reliable. So, but, and I don't wanna talk more about that, but I can say that, you know, reliability, expertise are come at a premium, especially with a little village like ours. So I agree. It's not always the cheapest. In fact, I think that's how things have, you know, been in the past, which, you know, may or may not be the best. You know, that's why we have some lack in some areas. So we are going with the better choices. And I think, you know, you all weighing in on these selections has been helpful, too.
Now, also on the retirement contribution, the council, well, we already about the, the retirement funds, and seven thousand dollars right there. I don't know if there's any update on that.
Yes, I'm sorry. I forgot that piece, and you're right. That's a big piece. So, you know, the contribution rate, because you are executive, executive level, that's why it was so high. We're now putting you at a regular employee rate, which would be, would be, it's, I don't know the exact number, but it's in the tens, you know, percent. So it would bring it down to about nineteen hundred dollars as opposed to seven dollars. So that's gonna be a savings as well.
Wait, I, I, I have to add something to that, because I, if, well, actually, no, let me, I wanna continue hearing all the questions. If you guys have any comments, because there's a few things that I was, that I'll, I'll mention in the end.
And also, yeah, I do, I also had a question, that same category about the, the travel mayor's travels and stuff like that. It's a category that we, I mean, I don't know, it's, what is it travel to, like, go to, like?
Tallahassee.
Tallahassee and stuff, but we have.
Could be less.
The lobbyists, right, as well. I don't know, is it something that we can cut on that a little bit, or?
So, so part of my recommendation was, if, and, and if you want, I'll chime in now, but I'm gonna start with the general fund revenue. Something that I noticed, and, and we've been talking about Biscayne Park a lot. So I took the time and I sat down via phone with the mayor for about six hours, with the mayor of Biscayne Park, to really get a handle on what they do over there, and how they save and what they, and so I, I picked up on a few things. She's a relatively new mayor, but she's seasoned. So one of the areas that's gonna, you all are gonna see a reflection in the general fund revenue, it used to be called judgment and other fines. It's now gonna be called traffic fines and judgments hyphen police, because that's traffic tickets. And one of the things that I thought was important was that, when I saw traffic citations on Biscayne Park, and I was like, I get letters, as the mayor, I get a letter from Harvey Rubin clerk I have for six years, and it always, it always delineates the amount of money the village gets. So I always wondered where that went. So when I spoke to the manager, it was kind of shuffled in, in that line item. So now it's gonna be, it's gonna be clearly stated, it's gonna say traffic fines and judgments. And why I felt that was really important is because it's a real opportunity to have a conversation. Because as we all know, while we all love our village and our village is beautiful, there was two areas that I felt that needed better compliance, and that was code enforcement, which I asked him to rename his compliance, and traffic. Because all of us know, anybody that reads social media and anybody that speaks to our neighbors, they're always gonna complain about the roof and about speeding, always. So I think there's always area for us to comply a little better with, and really work not so much as a punishment, but really reward those who do a great job. And, you know, when I saw that the code, the code enforcement fees were only two thousand, I was like, well, you know, with Louis Perella on board, and he's so, he's so passionate about code enforcement, and I know how he is about code enforcement. I told the manager, you know, let's up the ante a little bit. And I said, in traffic fines, you know, it's not that we wanna penalize our residents, but come on, speeding happens here. It does. And where is that, where is that being lined item that? So now you all are gonna see, right underneath garbage, solid waste, you're gonna see traffic fines and judgments. Same thing with alarm permits. I told them, you gotta add alarm permits. And, and does ring count as an alarm? So all that, that's a conversation that the council's gonna have in the future, because if ring is connected to the police, that has to eventually count as an alarm permit. And are those people that now have ring have, have permits? And, and we don't really know the answer right now, but that's gonna be a little homework that I think the police department, along with the administration, is gonna have to do. And then the other thing we talked about was the occupational license. Hey, I own a business here. And I for one, and, and actually, I, I called in another note, because I wanted to know, when was the last time my business paid the, the business tax? And so I did, I, I, and my business did, but I was like, it's not just me, and every little thing, and for my business, it's fifty-three dollars a year. And so I went ahead and I made sure that I was all up to date with that, but there's also a missed opportunity there. Again, it's not about penalizing anybody. But we live in an era now where we really need to take a look at those, and I think what's happened is that because I think with our front desk, there's been a little bit of change there, you know, there needs to be a procedure that's sent, that's put in a, in a binder, and that's what, you know, there's some things that you do daily, there's some things you do weekly, and there's some things you do monthly as a front desk, a, a, a building clerk. And I think that we, and annually for that matter. So I think there's been missed opportunity with occupational license, which now has been labeled as business tax receipt, because that's exactly what they're called. So that's a couple of things that you're gonna see on the general fund revenue that's gonna be, I think it's better conversation for the council to have when you're taking a look at, you know, what type of revenue, and are the police officers doing speeding tickets? And, you know, what is a revenue really coming from that? And again, it's not about penalizing our residents, but it's about compliance. It's about compliance with an ordinance, and it's a compliance with the law. The laws of police and the ordinance is our charter. So we felt those two code compliance and traffic fines were important for it to say actually what it is, as opposed to the way it has been for quite a while. As, as, when you go to the legislative, my recommendation for the new year was to take the travel down to three thousand. So you're gonna see it down to, generally, it's been at about five or six. But again, we don't know how long COVID nineteen is gonna be with us, so I recommended to move that down to three. Also, with the retirement contribution, I, I wanna slightly correct the manager, what the, what the CFO said was that the reason it was at a thousand, a thousand two hundred and seventy-one last fiscal year was because from the get-go, we were never classified as executives. I think that's one thing that was done, that we were always just a regular employee. So it wasn't such a, such a cost to the village. So the manager, excuse me, the, the CFO assumed that because we're elected, immediately, oh, the former CFO made a mistake, but when he called and spoke to FRS, the reality is, no. We were in the lower category. That is why our retirement contribution will not be seven thousand three hundred and seventy-seven. It's actually going to be about one thousand two hundred and seventy-one. That's gonna be the year in and year out cost of the retirement contribution for the council. So he proposed it at a thousand five hundred, he did an average. So that's the change you're gonna see there. And I, and I really think lobbying is gonna be a harder conversation. I think you all know, I've been passionate about having having a lobbying team. One of the things I did when I became the mayor in fourteen was in December of twenty fourteen, I recommended, and the manager agreed, and we went out for an RFQ for a lobbying team. We've only gotten money once. We got half a million in twenty seventeen, but it's time to, again, to have that real conversation as to whether or not what we're paying. I will tell you that Biscayne Park pays twenty thousand for the lobbying team, if you all wanna know. So my recommendation is, hey, do not pay twelve months out of the year, pay nine or ten, pay them two or three thousand dollars a month. That's the agreement that should be made. And you can easily take that down to twenty-five or thirty thousand a year. My next recommendation was, when you look at the contracted accountant, the Biscayne Park pays sixty thousand a year for their accountant, not seventy-two. Their budget is a little bigger than ours, but, and, and their CFO, she calls financial director, I believe, I don't remember, comes about two times a, a, a week, and is currently getting paid sixty thousand. I think they give four thousand five hundred a month, or something like that, she said. IT, I think that's the looming conversation. I know many of you have brought that up, so I, I think that she will, the manager will go out on, on some type of RFQ for that. I actually did not ask the, the Biscayne Park manager about that. I mean, Biscayne Park mayor. The project consultant, Roburano, one of the recommendations that I had made to the manager was that, as, and as she stated before, however the year is going to end, or how that's projected to end this year, unless we must move it up, because it's some type of an agreement, then it, then it needs to remain flat for the new year. So if we're gonna anticipate that the project consultant, which is Roburano, is gonna end at eighty-seven hundred, well, that needs to be knocked down to nine thousand or ten thousand, not ten thousand eight hundred. Public relations, as she mentioned, let's be conservative, knock it down to three thousand. Again, I told you that, you know, and I, we really, when we really had a hard conversation about the building maintenance, and she told me the floors, and I said, yeah, but who's visiting the village all, and how are we renting it? We're not gonna probably do that anytime soon. Hey, have a conversation mid-year. If you get the Irma reimbursement, if you get any other money, then you can have that conversation in January, February with the council, and maybe you all will have the money then and be able to move it up to thirty, but leave it at whatever you think is more reasonable. And she said ten, I think the I said, I think the council will be a little bit more amenable to that. Same thing with the special events. I'm like, you know, three, she moved it down five hundred dollars, and now it's three. Same thing with office supplies, you know, nothing for nothing, but when I added up all the office supplies, it was a lot of office supplies. So I said, you know, I think we've bought enough office supplies for the last three years. How about we take that down? So, so it was every opportunity that we could to cut, whether it was five hundred or with a thousand. And, you know, and, and again, she was agreeing to that. The urban planner, you know, it's kind of funny, because Juan will remind me of this even six years later. Again, once I got elected, I thought an urban planner was necessary, because we were going through a comp plan. I will tell you that Juan was voted in by four one. I did not vote for Juan, I will be very honest. But I think Juan, Juan and his team have been a phenomenal addition to this department, and to this, to the department of the administration. So I would caution the council, if you all are gonna go out there to RFQ, because what I learned now, working with Plasurbia as opposed to who I thought I wanted to vote for then, is that, you know, we're, we're small, and so is Plasurbia. So that boutique style of dealing that we have with them, there's a lot to be said for that. And, and the quality that we get from it, as far as preserving who we are and what the charrette was in twenty thirteen, which is why we brought an urban planner, was so they could take that charrette and make it come to fruition into life, and put in part of our charter and our comp plan, which is the first thing that Plasurbia did. And then it was finalized in twenty sixteen, so urban, and, and, and I didn't check on this, you'd have to, you'd have to check, but I believe since December of fourteen that they've been here, those fees, that sixty thousand has been sixty thousand across the board, and has never gone up, but has never really teared down either. Yes, I did talk about the, the, the village clerk, but I think that's more of a conversation that the council needs to have with regards to the salary of, you know, I, I'm not gonna have this conversation now, because I have not even picked up the phone to call her, but the conversation of a full-time, I think admin and finance has had it a lot. I really think you, the admin and finance really needs to have a conversation with her with regards to whether or not that, that's gonna be a full-time position, so that it can be better line item and better identified, so that we mitigate the overtime, so that we mitigate whether or not she's getting paid hourly, which is here at the meetings. I mean, all that's a greater conversation that I really encourage the admin and finance committee to have that hard conversation with her. And then bring it to the committee so you all can make a better recommendation, um, to whatever council is here. Uh, but I think that's necessary and it's going to be most prudent for you all to do that. Because what's been asked of me is, is the village clerk getting paid when she's on these council meetings? Um, so, uh, so I, again, I really think that you all need to have that conversation, um, as, uh, individually with her. And then you should have it at the admin and finance, uh, committee meeting. Um, um, uh, and, and I, and I apologize for all the chairs as I went through this. And, and as I look at public affairs, yes, my recommendation was move Miami Shores Gala from five to three. League of Cities from 5,000 to 3,000. And take everything that was pretty much 2,000 and mark it down to 1,000. And it really took public affairs down to 18,300. And then really challenged that whoever is going to, um, be running the committee next year. To really work with either the women's club or really work in raising money as we did in the past. I will say that in 2016, although I spent a lot of money in the art fair, 18,000, I raised $16,000. 18,000 was not El Portao money, 16,000 that was raised. So it's very important to know facts and it's very important to, uh, be aware of the opportunity that you all have as, as members of the council. When you guys are planning events and monies that can be raised because they've been done so, uh, very frequently in the past. Newsletter, whether the, whether the newsletter we have now is a newsletter you all are going to keep. Um, it's an option, you, you do have the option to do it black and white. I have chosen to do it in color. I have paid for it myself for years. The manager was the one that came up to me, says, you're not going to pay it anymore, the village should pay for it. So she put a line item in there. But my recommendation is with COVID-19, um, because everything's blamed on COVID right now. Um, and right now you can really keep the online version where there's no cost. Or keep the black and white version, which is still no cost to, to, um, the village at all. Um, and again, I, I struck everything down and I put it down to a thousand dollars, which took down from 28,000 to 18,000 in that department. Um, same thing with the, the police budget, everything that was, um, the way the year ended is the way we're going to, uh, tentatively propose a new year. So we're not even going to go up, you know, a thousand dollars. If it's the year ended 4,034, then we're going to project it for next year for 4,100. So, so that'll take down the police budget, you know, maybe four or $5,000. Um, um, building and code enforcement, um, no, nothing. Um, public works, I made a couple of recommendations. Uh, I, 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 I don't know Angel Lopez very well, but the little time that I've dealt with him, I feel he's a professional in the position that he's in. Uh, I was a little surprised to hear that he was making a part-time salary, which was a former gentleman that made Robert and Mr. D. But he's working full-time hours. So I, I, and, and I, so it's a little bit of a disservice to him. I thought it was great when, when, um, the manager and the CFO mentioned that, uh, portion of a salary can come out of C I, C I, uh, tax dollar, the penny tax. Yeah, um, so I think that's a real opportunity, that's being creative, you know, that's looking for ideas. So I thank the CFO and the manager for that. Um, because I do agree that that needs to be upped a little bit, um, because he's even doing roadwork and, uh, filling in the roads. Which is a little bit of a savings for the village. Um, the other thing I asked the manager and the CFO to take a look at was the $35,000, that's a line item for lawn maintenance. If there is a, somewhere in the, uh, and I, and I spoke to the, the attorney about this today. If there's somewhere in our, um, in our, um, development agreements, since it's all public works and it's all parks. If there's a way that there can either be an amendment to it, to take that $35,000, that 35,000 and it be paid out of the, um, um, public trust. If you all would approve, obviously, um, to, for the lawn maintenance, since it's, since it's maintaining all the parks, to come out of the, um, uh, what do you call that? Um, the, for the parks. Again, that'll have to be approved by the council, but that would take off $35,000 out of this budget itself. Um, and those are my only, uh, recommendations or comments. Oh, I will add one more thing of the attorney. Uh, I spoke in great length with the, um, with the attorney, about the attorney's fees to the mayor of Biscayne Park. Um, the attorney fees, and the reason I did that was because, um, Suzanne, I don't remember her name, the blogger that came and spoke. At the last meeting stated something, so I wanted to be able to go back and, and be sure, um, facts. And the fact is that Biscayne Park's attorney is paid 225 an hour. It's not on a retainer. Their goal is to not spend more than $75,000 this year, because last year they spent over 110,000. So the new mayor has been there for six months and now they have an RFQ and they don't want to spend any more than that. So that's why the RFQ went out. They also had Gray Robinson and Gray Robinson was charging them 225. And it was 225 sitting here right now at the meeting. And that was, and that's where they paid over 120. The other thing I, I thought was really important and, and a lot of people have gone back and forth on this. But I even almost asked her to come on tonight, but I guess she didn't get to make it. Was the ma, the, the attorney at Biscayne Park only attends council meetings. Does not, they don't have committee meetings because they have advisory boards that are residents. Uh, they, they have quiet judicial hearings, but unless an attorney comes up for, with the, with the, with the resident, the attorney never goes. The attorney doesn't even go to their budget hearings. I was really surprised about that one. But she, she says that they, the only, the attorney only goes to the council meetings. What the reason that they have gone, um, over 110 last year, she said, was because council people and the mayor back then spoke too much. So the meetings lasted so long that they, they didn't get everything fixed, they didn't get everything finished in one meeting. So then they'd have to call for another meeting. So council meetings were lasting like two to three nights as opposed to one night. And then that, and that's where, um, and when she came in and she addressed a few things, she was like, no. I want it to be hopefully a retainer fee, because she did her homework on other municipalities and realized there was a retainer fee. And why was it a, uh, hourly fee like they're paying right now? So again, I, I, I would, I would, uh, maybe encourage councilperson Urban, if you want, you know, call, her name is Mayor Virginia. She's great, I have her cell phone, she was very open, she was very, um, um, receptive to answering any questions. I think it's important to have all that information because my only concern with any RFQ that goes out. Is I don't want the village to be stuck paying hourly, because if we're paying hourly, that would be muy mal, very bad. Uh, we want to hopefully get stuck on the retainer. Um, and then the council has to make the decision. If we don't want the attorney to come to every meeting, then that's another conversation. Um, keep in mind that, uh, before, before Norman Powell started, uh. The Joe Geller only came to our council meetings, he never came to any committee meeting. That was something that we agreed upon and the council then, because we knew that at the committee middle, committee meeting, there was so much that was workshop. And we felt that it would just be, uh, uh, prudent for them, for the attorney to be there. So again, I would encourage the, um, um, councilperson Urban to, to either call, to get a little more homework and find out for yourself. Because I think that that would be important as you guys are putting all that together. Um, because I talked about, you know, whether or not, you know, what it looks like if we, if we put the attorney's salary down as well. Um, let's see what else. Um, and the, the, the mayor of Biscayne Park said, we should not have a lobbyist. So again, that is really the decision of the council. My recommendation is from 36 to either 30 or 25. Or if you all believe it's removing it, again, that's going to be the decision of council, it's not mine.
I'm sorry, yeah, that is something that, uh, you know, I had heard, uh, as well about having lobbyists that being so small and stuff like that. We don't really, you know.
Yeah, we've all, you know, I, I, you know, listen, we've had, we had some rough years. I, I can't say that in 2017, we received a half a million. Um, so, um, for, if you want to look at it this way, if you all were due way with the lobbying team, then at least we made it up in the time that they've been here. Because we received 550 and we're working in the Al Hardin projects, um, that are, we're going to be wrapping up. So it's not to say that it's not, but again, it's really a decision that the five ma, the five of us make, it's not just one. But again, I had, I broke down everything with her and had a conversation about every single line item. So, um, keep in mind, if you don't have a lobbying team, then you just have to really be proactive with your state senator. And stay rep to ensure that they're representing you day in and day out in Tallahassee. Um, along with, um, their other cities to ensure that hopefully we get some type of funding. Um, uh, anyway, maybe it's something that the village does for a year, I don't know. Um, so it's something that, it's a conversation to be had. Which is why it was important that I wanted you all to hear this, to digest those thoughts. And then come back and maybe give a recommendation to the manager. And then, um, we could take a vote on that, um, for the budget hearing in September. Um, those were the only, uh, comments that I, those are the only things that I saw. And I was really diving deep with a microscope this weekend and speaking with a couple of mayors. And then wrapping up my conversation with Mayor Virginia, um, this afternoon. Any other questions or any comments?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, first of all, I just want to say thanks for everybody for going through this stuff. Um, the first thing is, I know that when we, we were going over the budget workshop before. I remember I asked a question about the, I understand that now, you know, because back then we thought it was like 7,000. This is the FRS dealing with like the council members. Back then we thought it was 7,000, now it's down to like 1,000 something, which is, is, uh, is nowhere near what it was. But I did ask the question that do elected officials, do we have to be in that though?
I don't think, the manager can answer, but I don't think he has the answer on that yet, he's still waiting for the.
Exactly, we're still waiting for determination, but Chris Wallace has been contacting FRS and working with them to get a determination. So we'll let you know as soon as we find out.
Okay, my second thing, I've got three, three things real quick. Number two, number two was, I just want everybody to really, really, um, know that what the mayor was talking about when it comes to the attorney. Before the attorney, because if, if we're thinking about pulling the attorney off of the committee, um, meetings. Like she said, like the mayor said, that's something that the council has to decide. But, and the mayor will be able to tell you guys this, before we had the attorney at the committee meetings, you guys. You're talking about meeting once a month. At the full council meetings. Then we're waiting for answers to where we don't get the answers. First you have to tell the person, then if we don't get the answer at the next council meeting, we used to be waiting for answers. America Beal will be, will be able to tell you this better, we used to be waiting for answers sometimes for months. For months. And there are times to where, when we're here with our, our attorney now, we're here and, and there's, there's times to where he'll say, okay, let me, let me get that. Let me get, get, get back to you on that. But there's things, when, when I've asked him for stuff, he's getting back to me the next day. Consistently. And there's other times to where we'll ask him, or we'll be confused on something, he'll have the answer for us right then and there. Like the mayor said, at the end, the council will have to decide as a collective. But it's just, and, and it's difficult, Madam Mayor, to, 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 to do the, you know, we've been here for a long time type of thing. And how it used to be, it's just difficult to say that, because I would never want to say that trying to like push seniority in anybody's face. But you guys, like, it was different back then, like, I, I lived through that. And it used to be, councilperson Mathis used to almost hit the, the, the smoke out of his, out of his ears, used to almost reach the roof. Because he would used to be asking questions over and over and over again. That's number two. Number three, on a much lighter note, well, a heavier thing, but on a much lighter note, number three, you guys, I think that. Keep, keep in mind, everybody, just, just throwing it out there, I threw it out there last time at the budget hearing. Just keep in mind that we may not need $1,100,000 in that fund for parks. I mean, 800,000 is a lot. 700,000 is a lot. I don't think we need 1,100,000. I think we need to start to build our reserves and pull a few hundred thousand dollars out of that and put it into the reserves. I think we're, we're like one hurricane away, one problem away from like, we need to have some reserves. We don't need 1,100,000.
May I?
Much, that's all, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
May I say something about that?
Councilperson, uh, Councilperson.
I will have paid, I will have paid for the million dollars for it not be paying interest, even though they're low now, uh, period. And that's a way we could have, you know, be saving and all the thing, yes. I agree that, that those funds from the Cavista could have been, you know, we could have been paying the loan or whatever we got it, you know. Uh, million point one, million point two that we're paying interest on. And at least pay half of it and just get rid of some, uh, more interest. But that's not what was agreed and 100% um, agree with you that it's money that should have been, um, you know, directed, um, you know, better. Like, uh, I've talked to the manager about it, she was strongly, strongly, uh, recommending something, you know. To do something more productive with our money and, um, being that we need, uh, to cover a lot of stuff with, uh. But, eh, you know, if we can amend it, uh, I know there's some residents that were very strong about, you know. Making sure of the money not being used for what the manager, the mayor just, um, you know, suggested, uh, you know, like. Cleaning the, the, or using it to, uh, towards the, the, what am I calling it?
Maintenance.
The maintenance, uh, thank you, and, and all of that, so. But, I, I certainly agree with that money being, um, have been used. It is true, what, um, Mr. Um, Anders said the other day, it's money that's there, you know, you don't have to worry about it. And, you know, over 10 years or more, you know, having that money there, sitting there and knowing that we, if we have any problems. Parks and green spaces, we have the money there, wouldn't have to, you know, in misusing that money. If a lot of people might think it's been, um, it's, it's, it's. That's the purpose of, uh, misusing the money, it's, it's, it's just being a little wise and then probably, uh, cover some areas where we have a lot of.
So my recommendation to that is as follows. If you all want to not have another development agreement that looks at Cavista, you need to change the charter. Because the reality is, the reason the Cavista agreement is the way that is, is because our charter dictates. And I, I was going to ask the attorney to opine, but, um, the charter says that it's based on square footage. And what the developer is putting forth in terms of green space. And if they're not, there's all, there was, there was all calculations done. So I would urge each of you, let's all get the facts, uh, call the attorney. But, um, for, we, the village still has two areas with really one of them being a bigger development. If you don't want to see that happen again, I'm not quite sure what can be done with this agreement. The only reason I recommended the, uh, lawn services because it's related to public works and parks. And there's a possibility that there's a loophole to embrace that 30, uh, $30,000. Uh, but if you are not, if the village is not, um, um, excuse me, if the council is not, uh, is wanting to change that, it's got to be done with the charter. You got to change the code, you got to do the charter, because that's where it really initiates from. And, and again, I'll ask the attorney to, um, give his, uh, his opinion on that. But that would be my two cents on that, if you don't want to see that happen again. Uh, because Juan, if Juan was here, Juan will tell you that, uh, be careful with what you change because green space matters. And you don't want us, you, you know, Coconut Grove was beautiful at one time. And when you take a look at Coconut Grove today, and even though the greenery and the trees are beautiful, they have a lot of buildings and they have a lot of, you know, high rises. That could easily happen to us if we don't allocate green space per square footage per development. So, um, on that note, I'll ask the attorney to, um, if there's anything that I missed out or I spoke incorrectly.
No, I think you captured it. The only thing I would add is that the current ordinance relating to how the, um, funds received from the developer are to be used. Was born out of a process that, that, by last count, I think there's at least five or six meetings. Um, there were workshops, there were two readings. And there was a lot of public input concerning, um, what the villagers wanted to see, um, in that ordinance. In fact, I don't think I've gotten any more emails relating to that, um, process, other than maybe the, um, the school. From citizen input. So, um, to the extent that there is a desire, which is being discussed now, to go ahead and, um, revisit that. It's going to take the same process.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, um, you know, the only thing I have to add is that a million dollars goes really fast. When it comes to government and when it comes to, um, the spending. And so that was part of, you know, that was part of the discussion when we made those decision and we voted on that. Um, you know, that money could have, in a blink of an eye, be gone if it would have been put for operational things. Um, you know, and so. I mean, that was all part of the discussion.
Agree, just leave it alone.
I, I just want to hear, um, the manager's, uh, view on this also, I know she worked closely with that also.
Yes, no, it was never to be for operational. Uh, no, certainly some aspects are a large, uh, piece of that would be used for the green space. I had proposed that we utilize some for reserve and then perhaps use a little bit, maybe, uh, even less than 100,000 on the, the vehicles and the public works. Truck and the, you know, code enforcement. But, uh, certainly, uh, for reserve and, uh, which, you know, we would need if there was an event like a hurricane. So I get it, you know, I understand that it's reserved for certain purposes and the green space aspect of it. But, you know, there was enough to share, uh, between that, uh, the green space as well as the reserve that we need. So that's why I made those recommendations. So that's why I made those recommendations back when we first discussed this. And I, you know, I stick with those recommendations, but again, this is up to you all. And I know we've discussed it a number of times. So it's, it's your call, but those were my recommendations.
All right. Good discussion. Any other comments before, um, we, um, slowly wrap up? Because I know you all wanted to not be here too late, seven forty-five. All right. Good conversation. So I think it's up for you to think about and, and, and reach out to the manager. We have more ideas and more conversation. Um, and I'm looking forward to seeing the updated version of the, um, um, the budgeter that we went through. So I appreciate that. Um, having said that, um, if there is no more discussion or comment from the council, I'm going to open up to public, public. Um, good welfare? There's nobody on here tonight. Um, we're just, just us. So, okay. Um, having, uh, seen that there is nobody, no attendees with us this evening, all righty. Um, council, anything else? All right. All hearts and minds are clear because I've, I've, I've been on the call all day with President Hardeman. So like, that's all I hear all day with him. So if that's, if that's the case, am I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion, a motion been made by seven forty-five, uh, by councilperson Urban. Is there a second?
Second, the motion, Madam Mayor.
Second by Vice Mayor Nukus. There's a motion to adjourn and there's a second. All in favor, we're sticking it by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, our special council meeting concludes at seven forty-six P M. You all have a good night. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. You guys take care.